So it is now six thirty-two, Tuesday, September thirtieth, on the ad hoc budget procedure committee meeting order. Ian Thomas, Jen White, Mike Whitney, present, along with Susan Austin and Rita.
Ian, it's a little difficult to understand. I don't know if it's the wifi or what it is.
How do you say your last name?
Parsiac.
Rita?
Parsiac.
Parsiac, got it. Yep, okay. Let me try something different here.
Now you sound fine. Now we can hear you.
Is that better?
Yeah, yeah, we can hear you now.
All right, very well then. So yeah, six thirty-two, Tuesday, September thirtieth, calling the meeting to order. All committee members present, along with Susan Austin Superintendent and Rita Parsiac, Finance Director. So the purpose of the meeting is to just kind of discuss the packaging presentation, the budget book, and some information, stuff that the board has discussed. Wanted to have included upfront. So with that, I'll open the floor to my fellow committee members to just kind of talk about what their interests were. But before I do that, I guess, I don't know, I'd like to hear the Finance Director just kind of maybe open up as well about how how you typically present budgets and what you like to, how you like to lay things out.
So I just want to say that the budget book in Groton, I think, is very detailed compared to what I'm I've been used to and what I've developed. And I typically start with meetings with the departments and talk about staffing. Obviously, that's the biggest chunk of everybody's budget. So that's typically where I start with meetings, usually in November, with each school and department to go over staffing needs. And I send out templates of their other, you know, their other objects, non-salary related, to have them submit, you know, what their needs are. And we talk about that during those meetings as well. But the biggest focus for the first couple of months is the salaries. Is that a good start or?
Um, yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, typically, we receive the book. You know, we well, ideally, it happens sometime in January where, you know, we get the book and we start we open up the kind of the review process. But just sort of for the past couple of years, there's been some areas where we've struggled to get good clarity on some information. So I'll hand off to Jen White, because I see your hand raised. Jen?
Yes, hi, I'm slowly getting my video and audio in. Rita, I just want to say thank you, you know, for joining like the district first and foremost, and the work that you and have provided and shared with, not only with the Finance Committee and the Board at the CLWs. It's very promising. So thank you for that. And I know you're developing a good team. So definitely looking forward, like, not only this ad hoc committee, but also the Finance and Facilities Committee working with you, you know, to help any one of us, there should be six of us, well, five, because I think I've counted twice, but would be willing to help. And I know other members of the Board as well. So with that, you know, maybe Ian, we could, you know, since Rita shared what she normally goes through, we could sort of share what we had discussed in the ad hoc committee and then just see, like, bounce things off of Rita for now. So that was it.
Yeah, I think I think that'd be a great way to proceed. And I'll open the floor for Mike as well. Mike, do you want to kind of have any opening comments?
Yes, thank you. Thank you both for coming, everyone for coming. So one thing for Town of Groton is there's an extra layer that the budget goes through. Of course, it goes to the Finance Director and the the School District and the Superintendent, then through the Board, then to the Town Council, and then to the Representative Town Meeting. And because of all those layers, it's really important to have, I found, a clear narrative in the budget book of really mostly what they're worried about is what's changed. Well, you know, increased or decreased. That really kind of helps the budget as an internal document shepherd its own way through, through the process. And one thing, actually, there are a lot of different ways of presenting the budget in the current budget book. I found actually the function code summary, Rita, that you just provided for the end of this last fiscal year. That's a really good level that someone could very quickly go down and and see where money's being spent. Along with that, and I think it's probably in a lot of budgets too, but it's been the tradition to have not just the current year, but then the year before at least, and then so that people can sort of see, see the history of things. Because they are wondering, well, what's changed? And seeing the numbers as well as the accompanying narrative really helps with that. One, I think, big improvement that we had last year that was helpful was there's more things put in the district, district-wide function code, where before the the benefits for the company, teachers and staff, administrators, were all like kind of assigned to each, like, elementary teaching, for instance, or high school, or a different department. And that got confusing because it all depended exactly on what kind of benefits a person would want, where in the end, it just got last year, put all in one group, and that really helped things. We made that change last year. I'm hoping to see that still go forward, because then you get a sense of, okay, this is how much budget benefits overall have changed. And we're not like having to face that down. Here, hold on. Sorry about that. And so that's, that's, I like seeing that go forward. The other thing is, just in general, it's always going to occur, particularly with a new director, that you'll see, someone will see they want some expenses grouped differently than they were before. And when that happens, it just gets confusing in the budget, but that's where like, a lot of extra narrative helps that out to avoid the, oh, my goodness, you're not funding such and such anymore, or now it's up by two hundred percent. Things, questions like that, because having it go through smoothly are better. So those are my entry comments.
Can I speak about that? So I totally agree with you, district-wide benefits, workers' comp, all that stuff should be lumped together, but I will have a change in function in our next finance meeting for the budget book, because we have state guidelines that guide those function numbers. So whoever created the function last year for this budget book of seventeen, I think it was
Seventeen hundred.
Seventeen hundred, right? Yeah, so seven, anything that starts with a one is instructional, according to the State of Connecticut. So I did have to change that function to, to start with a two to twenty-three ninety-nine. So you will see a transfer next week, just transferring into the correct function. So those are the only changes that I see moving forward in the function side is, is getting it into the function that the state requires us to report these expenses in. And I'm going to give you guys a guideline on Tuesday of what the state requires.
So in Finance and Facilities, we're going to go through that. So the Board will clearly understand the numbering system. So that if, with this change, you know, and should there be any others, we'll at least understand why, right?
Right.
And that sounds good. And to just, I think, as long as, you know, there's some clear statement of that in the book as it, as it passes through all the hands that it has to pass through, I think that'll help ease a lot of questions and concerns. One other thing that I had on my list that was not covered already by Jen and Mike was the idea of trying to have all the FTEs associated with any given department on display in that department. Historically, there, there's been some times where some FTEs that are not funded directly through the budget that are maybe grant-funded or aren't appearing in with the FTEs of that department, even though they are part of that department. And one suggestion that was made was that maybe to include them all and just put a little notation next to them, you know, that the funding for their salary or any given expenditure is associated to a grant, and therefore not coming out of the direct operational budget. Does that make sense?
I definitely agree with the function, the FTEs by department. It might get a little tricky with the grant funding, but we can see what we can develop and, and see if it fits your needs. But I am used to FTEs by department even, which includes grant-funded positions. So it would be all FTEs for the whole district by department, if that's what you're looking for.
Yes.
And Rita, tell them how many grants we have, now that you've gotten to know and love them.
Forty-seven, there's about forty-seven different grants in our Fund III, we call it, for last year. This is last year's balance. I've been balancing, we have the auditors coming out next week. So I've been, you know, trying to balance with the town by grant. And yeah, there's, there's forty-seven.
Great, that's fantastic. And I imagine also that those will be highlighted and identified, and we will show the budget, like, the total amount of revenue that's used to support the school system, and then like, show how much of that is grant-funded, and then what the actual operational cost of the town is.
I typically have a, a grants page that it shows you the revenue for the grants. And then I think that you already have the, the page of total funding for that includes like the ECS and the, the revenue that the town gets for our budget. That, and that's a typical spreadsheet and pie chart, I think. I've already seen that. But I, I'm not a hundred percent sure if you have the total grants page. And it's a projected revenue page, because you don't know, I only can assume, like, Title I's going to come in about the same amount for next year. You know what I'm saying?
Understood.
So, yeah.
Same with Impact Day. We've had years where it's come in over six million, and years where it's been right around four. So, and anywhere in between.
Yep. Yeah, I think one of the concerns that was relayed was just trying to make it really obvious and emphasize how much the district works to defray the costs of the education on the taxpayer, that, you know, every effort's made, and all these grants are brought in. And the actual cost of running is this, but the actual operational bill, so to speak, that goes to the town is significantly, significantly lower because of all these grants that our teams worked to secure. I see, thank you. I see Jen, Jen's hand.
Hi, yes. So Rita, just a question. I know we're talking about operational budget and then grants. I think it was Dean and you know, Ian, correct me if my memory serves me incorrectly, but I think it was Dean who was sort of looking to have, at least for this year, here's the operational budget, and then a column that shows the grants, and then for like a total budget. I know we have it as like, I think, a pie chart in the current book. Is that something that you've seen in your prior district or in, like, your colleagues, maybe? Or are we asking for something that is not really, you know, like, standard?
For totality, yes, we can give that to you. You know, in totality, these are, this is all of the grant revenue we expect, and the ECS and everything. And you can do a pie chart, and it'll show you how much does the grant support the district, and how much does the ECS, and how much does the actual taxpayers? So, yeah, I think
Do that. Okay.
But it's in totality. It's not going to be, the grants are not going to, typically not going to be itemized.
Yeah, I don't know what Dean was requesting. Ian D, did he want it, like, for each function code, or did he just want it in, like, one to two pages in the front? I know he's mentioned it several times.
Yeah, it's my memory. I think he's mentioned it in a couple of different frames. So I think you're right on both counts. Because he's, he's throwing it out one way, and I think he's throwing it out the other way. But, you know, I could see the value in, in, in seeing it broken out per function code. But I could also see how that could become very tedious, and and to what end. And, you know, what would be the ultimate cost benefit analysis there?
I know that we've had a page for grants in the past that really outlines the, the amount of money that we're receiving kind of each year. So you see the total amount of the grant over a five-year period, and what the expectation is for the current or the next year. And we can look back at some of those just to see what they look like and take a look at it with you. You know, to see what, you know, and maybe that's in a Finance and Facilities, Dean may be referring to something like that, that we've had in the past. And it was just a simple sheet, but it gave you an idea of each year what we were getting, in addition to the operation costs, in addition to the revenue that the town was bringing in.
I have a template that I, I can use. I do have a template. And typically, we give prior year and current year and projected. So that we can see how the grants are moving, whether we're getting less or more. But I'm going to say that the grants do not go by function. They are not tracked by function. They are tracked by object. So they're different.
Okay. Well, you know, along those lines, maybe, I think also someone mentioned at some point, the idea of maybe just including the grant reports that, that are filed regularly anyway, as, as part of the appendix to the book. So it wouldn't be like, it would just be compiling those reports as they're submitted and just put them in as an appendix. So they're there for reference sake. And that could alleviate, alleviate a lot of, because there's always a lot of curiosity as to like, the actual particulars of where these grants hit inside the operational budget.
Exactly.
And, but I also, you know, very concerned of like, not overloading or, you know, asking for too much detail, you know, and, you know, the business office has a lot of business to attend to. So anything we do to streamline the process and include the information in a way that's, if it's already being produced for the reports, maybe just include the reports in an appendix. Is that something? Would that be relatively easy with? Sorry, Jen.
Yeah, no, I think that's good. Like, I don't want the business office to create work if it's, you know, if it's not function code, if it's not, I think, if we as a group, whether it's this group or Finance and Facilities, say, hey, yeah, we, we just wanted to show at a high level. And then we can come into agreement on that, and then reflect how many FTEs those grants support. I think that would sort of be enough. And then we need to tell the rest of the Board that that's all we're going to get. And that's enough detail. That's what other districts do. And, you know, not burden and ask for more information. So I don't know where that's good. Yeah.
So if we can The only issue with the reporting is grants being awarded on time, because we do not put it in a finance unless it's awarded. And some grants don't get awarded until January, February, you know, it's, we count on it, but I'm just giving you a heads up that the state has gotten more behind in the past than used to award them in July years ago. It was nice, because in July, we could, you know, start running reports. But as of right now, Title I, we can't even apply for. We thought it opened up, and, you know, they were still working on the numbers. We have the total amount of the number, but we can't put the budget in.
Understood. I, I do, I understand that as well, and I can see the problem. I have a thought about that, but first I want to recognize Mike.
Yeah, sorry.
Thanks. Yeah, I, I guess I'd advocate for Middle Road with the grants. We do already, as mentioned, have like an overview of how many, how much grant funds is coming in. And that's, that is helpful, very helpful, as an overview. But perhaps a middle road would just be, I guess, if it's forty-seven grants, maybe two pages of this, but like a, a one-liner, like, this, this grant is this. It's, it's awarding agency, it's, you know, it's term, it's project span, and then just like a, a short one-liner on what it is. And, and if you wanted to add another liner there that said, this supports two speech pathologists, or something like that, that, that might be good. So people could just get a, a quick sense of what's there. Rather than, because I wouldn't want to have what could be hundreds of pages of project reports tacked on the end. But then, like, along with that page somewhere, just have a website to point to where where it may, may or may not have the project reports. I guess I would prefer that, but it'd have more information where we'd have the information more people would care about, like, highlights about, you know, their, the, the goals of each one, highlights of accomplishments, and there are plenty. And just, you know, point to that in the document, say, you can go to such and such website for more information, because that, I think, would help. I almost think sometimes we need, I don't know if you get your, your tax bills that say, your mill rate would be such and such if not for state funding. It's kind of the equivalent, you know, the town would have to pay such and such if not for all this grant funding through competitive grants and categorical grants that come through. Oh, and I, just one more comment. We right now, like, in the budget document, have things by function code, and then also by object code. I've seen value in both of those. It sounds like, at least with the grants, there's definitely value there. But I was wondering if you thought as, that, that does make the budget book long, but is that worth keeping? Both of those perspective?
I think, my opinion is it should be by major object, not by specific object. And by major object, what I mean is a hundreds is salaries, two hundreds is benefits, three hundreds is, you know, what I give as a summary. Because we, there are so many object codes, and, and to go down to the level of detail of a hundred dollars in supplies for the music department, I'm just, you know, making something up, but I just think that's, that's a lot. But it is, it is a projection, so, you know, we can keep it the way it is. I just, I think it should be more by the major objects, but and it could be certified, non-certified, you know, we could split it up that way, and, and tuition versus other purchase services. You know, but I just think there's, I don't even know how many objects we have, but there's a lot.
Understood. Have you ever seen it in, in the as far as like salaries go, seen anything like, like, broken up, as opposed to just being certified or non-certified? Being broken up by like title or category of, of position?
I mean, I've seen like, you know, non-certified, certified stipends, overtime, double time. I've seen it like that. I just think there's more here than I'm used to. Like, in the supply area, there's like so many object codes for supplies, when, in my opinion, a lot of them could be just called instructional, not, I'm trying to think, there's like
Utilities are a supply. We
Right.
That disaggregated from your regular instructional supplies.
Right, you could have instructional and, and utilities, but we have it down to the level of six fifteen is special ed supplies. I've never seen it at that level. Special ed supplies, what? You know, so we're, I think, I, I just think we have a lot of six hundreds, and we really should look at why they're separated. Why is there a six fifteen? Why isn't it just instructional for special ed? Special ed is the function, not the object.
That's interesting. Yeah, no, that, that's, that's a great area to explore. I'd be curious to know, like, you know, how, how we got there and what was the reasoning, but
Yeah, yeah.
But if you have a, a different approach that you think might be more efficient and more streamlined, I'm definitely open to hearing all those things.
Because the function should tell you what it's for, you know, what department, but the, the object should tell you, what are you buying? Six fifteens as special ed, you're not buying special ed, you know?
Right.
You're buying instructional, or you're buying software, you know?
Yes.
Yeah.
Makes sense. Mike, I see, is your hand, I see your hand still up, are you?
Yeah, I, I had it hanging up, and then I put it down and put it back up. But I was wondering, so, so one thing about my understanding of the budget document is that it was kind of brought in by, from multiple sources, like, in the function code breakdown, there's an explanation of the FTEs, a chart, and that's where the narrative is. That was probably one document. And then another one was an express, Excel spreadsheet, which would have the actual numbers. And so kind of keeping those two things consistent, my guess, it took a lot of, like, people time and double checking.
Right about that.
Yeah, I am concerned about that.
Is, are we, so the hope is, if we get Munis or another software, like, that, that, that would kind of go away, but is that realistic to expect for this year? My feeling is maybe not. Are, are we stuck with the old system, or are we, we have brighter futures ahead for the, the new software?
Munis is at least two years away. I'm going to say that, because it's, it's a huge conversion. I'm not sure how good E Finance's budgeting system is. I'm trying to look into it a little bit, because they all have a budget software, but it takes a lot of manpower to get it up and running. But it also takes a lot of manpower to do it in Excel. So it's like, I want to explore it and see what it looks like. I definitely want to start using Position Control. Because that is for the bulk of the budget, which is salaries. That is something that really, really helps cut down on mistakes in FTE, or from one spreadsheet to another spreadsheet, you know, it's all manual work. Position Control, you can, you can put in every single position inside the software, and then run a report or query. And, and, and so I'm really, I really want to put that in place before Munis.
Sounds like that'd be helpful. Yeah.
Yeah.
If I could just ask a quick clarifying question. When you say Position Control, could you just explain what that term means? How that would function, or how that plays out?
So it, it creates a number for every position that you have in the district. So every FTE, depending if it's a full-time or not, even part-time FTEs have a position number. And in Wyndham, when we went to Munis, I created a scheme, a numbering scheme in Position Control that would tell you, okay, when I look at this number, I know it's a teacher, and it's at Charles Barnum, you know, you could tell by the number where the actual position is.
Got it. Okay, that sounds fantastic. So
It's really a great tool that It's really a great tool that.
Yeah.
Well, you es- especially the district this size, you need it.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Agreed, agreed.
I really want to hopefully have um the time to implement. The position numbers before the budget book, it's just, it's a it's a lot of work. Because we're starting from scratch, nothing is in there right now.
Understood, understood, uh I see Jen.
Only getting there, um that is that a software and do we need to purchase, make an investment in that or?
No, it's inside E Finance and Munis, that's why, it's a module, think about it as there's AP module, there's. Inside human resources, there's a thing called position control. And it's numbering system and you put in for like a every teacher, every secretary, every. Every single person in there.
Because I think, you know, like um one of the things we've been hit with is like transparency, right? Not that I'm saying we're gonna share this information because I disagree with sharing it, right? But to be able to communicate to the people who fund us that, hey, we have this in place. And we know that each position is accounted for, each um. And I think it will alleviate that uncertainty sometimes that we get feedback for, so this is, this is welcome news. That um this is something that we don't need to buy, it's already exists and it's a matter of just. Finding the time to implement it, so.
And the way.
This is good news.
Is to do these things in E Finance while we've got E Finance so that everybody understands it and then when we move to Munis, it'll be an easier lift. Because you're switching over systems, but you've got it organized.
Understanding what it is, is the main goal here, like for my staff, because they're new. You know, um understanding what a what position control does and it also tracks the. Funding source and it tracks the school, it tracks the, you know, the location, it tracks a lot. I know they have an upgrade, E Finance came out with an upgrade, but I guess you have to pay for that upgrade, so I want to see. First, if I can just use what we have. Um it the position control that we have and and not buy the upgrade, because if if it works. As it is, we might not need the ad- advanced um functions.
Yeah, especially if we're gonna transition over. Into years, yep, yeah, no, that makes sense.
Makes sense to me.
Thank you.
Um that addresses one of the other concerns I had on my list, um as far as like tracking salaries or, you know. Yeah, so as Jen said, you know, it just leaves a lot of, it leaves a lot of questions and concerns, you know, ahead of the curve, so.
Um leaves a lot of the manualness out of it.
Yeah.
That's why I want to do it, because trying to track. Cuts and and all of that, it's very hard if you're doing it just in Excel.
Understood, that sounds like a great way to streamline what we have. Um anybody else have any of anything uh else to share, um I've I've exhausted my list.
Well, I I guess it's a a question and I'm wondering more than anything else, um. What do you think collectively our our next step forward should be? We we've lived with the budget document for a while and kind of grown accustomed to it and it's added on helpful, helpful parts, uh. Rita, is would it be useful for like worth your time? And this is a real question, would it be worth your time to look through it and say like um keep, you know, just broad brush? Uh this is a really helpful section, keep this, um we could do this differently and then kind of like give that to us for input. Or uh that'd be kind of one way, like let's let's try and overhaul this a little bit to help help um. Uh you and um like kind of take us a step along the way towards, for instance, Munis eventually. Um or should we uh be concentrating on smaller changes this year? And keep the budget book sort of as it is, because that way you can spend your time and your office, your office's time on other things. Um the the those are kind of what I've been wondering as we've been going through the meeting, I've heard helpful comments, I'm just wondering. What our next steps are for this year in our current situation?
I definitely think we should take small steps because of this position control that I want to implement to be able to pull the. Numbers for the budget, you know, so if there's glaring. Object code things that I just feel like, oh, we shouldn't have, we should just combine these two, I'm just making up an example. Um I think we should do that, but to, I I don't think we should overhaul it this year. If that may, if that's, did I answer your question, Mike?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. I didn't want to be helpful without being helpful. Right, um Jen, anything else?
Yes, so with with that comment of not overhauling. Totally agree, not mass, but you know how you had mentioned the supplies? Um and like consolidating just the supplies, are we, are you, is that part of your small consolidation?
I think that's the biggest thing is the supplies, I can look at the other objects and see if there's glaring, like why do we have? You know, so many and but I I think that the supply one is the one that just sticks out in my head that it it's. Doesn't make sense, some of those objects, they're more of a function than an object. And we already have the function attached, you know, so um. Small things like that and and I want to make sure that all the functions are accurate, like I said, with the whole benefits um. District-wide number, that's awesome that we have a district-wide number now for benefits, but it was just the wrong. Um sequence, the wrong, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Because of the state law.
Because of the state reporting.
Thing and there was an error.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, no, that's that's totally fine, I was just trying to understand like what you would consider small and big.
I would, small, I just think, I do think we need like a a revenue grants page if we don't have that, um. And until I dive into every single page, I won't, I I'm not gonna be a hundred percent sure, but I really want to focus on. Developing that position control, which is gonna take a couple of months, you know. Um because we have so many staff and every single staff member, it's a unique number for every FTE. So that you are tracking.
Mm-hmm, and is it unique to the person or the position, so let's say. For the position, okay, so let's say I'm teacher number twelve at Charles Barnum. And I move over to Mystic because they have an opening, so. When I move, I'll now be like teacher number twenty-two. At Mystic and then when you hire a new person, they'll be teacher number twelve.
Yes.
Or whatever number I use.
Specific to the position.
Perfect, that's, yeah, could, okay, thank you. Ian, I think I'm all set regarding questions for now, so.
Okay, um sounds great, uh I again, I just want to thank uh. Thank you Rita for taking the time to meet with us and um thank you for loaning her out, uh Susan.
Oh, absolutely.
I do have one more thing.
Sure, yes, please.
Is working on the budget calendar, will that be something what we do soon? Do you have an actual calendar that specifies when we meet with the departments, when we meet with the, you know, date ranges?
We we have one that we've used and it goes very much like what you did, that you start internally. You know, to get everybody's ideas and FTEs are the biggest thing, so we do this, the position control, the salary piece. So that's probably ultimately the first thing to consider, you know, when you talk about timelines and next steps. Um and then, you know, meeting with the principals, meeting with the department heads. And they're used to doing that and you might have a form that looks a little different than what's been used before. Because, you know, um we've had a few people in that office, so um but they're used to gathering the information. Basically, they know what their function is and then they know what the objects are underneath them, so they're, you know, everybody. You know, the principals have been here for a while, long while, and the directors have been here, so they're used to doing it that way. But if you have other ways of doing it, you know, bring them on.
I think my only concern is the outside companies that we need estimates from, like MDG liability, those. I I just want to know going into the fall, what deadlines are we gonna give them? To get us the information, you know, for insurance, basically, it's all then, you know, employee benefits. But you're getting it from different sources.
Lori can actually fill us in, but when we meet with John Burt, um you know, Monday to talk about the audit. You can always bring that up to him as we go into this budget season, what does he predict? Because they're usually the ones who are bringing them in, but I know that Lori has reached out before in the past too.
Because sometimes that slows things up.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
That's all, and those are big numbers and it and. The benefits, I'm not sure how it was developed in the past, but um I have, you know, spreadsheets and formulas that I. Use to help develop the um benefit costs because there are contributing factors like retirees can contribution and employee contributions. So.
Well, that that would definitely help, I don't know if you all remember um Ian, Mike and Jen, but it seems like we waited a while to get the MDG. Information on um insurances.
Yes, it was always.
Later in the process, we were waiting and waiting and it finally, we finally got.
Usually, I'm usually not getting it in Wyndham till January.
Yeah, like late January, early February, I felt.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the one thing, the one thing that we discovered was uh it's definitely better to have some kind of placeholder number that approximates the estimated amount. As opposed to just having a a zero figure.
Oh, yeah, I agree, I agree, definitely if we could have. Like just last year's and bump it up a little bit until you get the numbers from MDG.
Yeah, makes sense. All right, um anything further, Bev, uh do you want to jump in?
I didn't even know Bev was on.
Yeah, yeah, I see you're in the list here, all right, I guess I'll take that as a no. Um so yeah, if there's nothing else, um I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn.
All right.